At this time I'd ask that we have a moment of silence in honor and memory of both Mary Stinchula and Dow Cornehan unfortunately in the last month so we've lost two icons in our community and I'd ask that we have a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you. Roll call Ms. Buck.[94.11][96.86]- Mr. Bartel?[98.11][98.11]- Here.[99.11][99.86]- Mr. Murph?[100.86][100.86]- Here.[101.86][102.46]- Ms. Cogwell-Frankner?[103.86][103.86]- Here.[104.86][105.66]- Mr. Forish?[106.66][106.66]- Here.[107.66][108.66]- Mr. Baldmarin?[109.66][109.66]- Here.[110.66][111.36]- Ms. Beasy?[112.36][113.76]- Mayor Wolford?[114.76][114.76]- Here.[115.76][115.76]- Six present. At this time I'd ask for approval of the minutes from the April 11, 2016 council meeting.[122.86][123.56]- I make a motion to accept and approve the minutes of the April 11, 2016 meeting and if they remain on the secretary's desk for all agree.[133.26][133.96]- May I have a second please?[135.26][135.26]- I second that motion.[136.86][137.06]- Any questions or discussion? All in favor?[140.66][141.06]- Aye.[142.06][142.06]- Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time I'll ask for approval of the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of April 2016.[150.96][152.66]- I'll make a motion Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Murph. May I have a second please?[155.86][156.16]- I'll second Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Forish. Any questions or discussion? Bar? Everything on track? Anything out of the ordinary?[164.86][164.86]- That's all.[165.86][166.86]- Thanks.[167.86][172.86]- All in favor?[173.86][174.26]- Aye.[175.26][175.26]- Any opposed? At this time we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting if anyone in the audience would like to go to the microphone. Well before I do that I just want to say we are honored tonight to have with us Ms. Victoria Pickett. She's going to speak a little bit at the end of the meeting and so I just want everyone to give her a Latrobe welcome.[197.36][197.36]- Thank you for being here. Okay, now we have our -- yes. Do you want to do that now?[205.96][205.96]- Before the -- Okay, alright. I need to make a -- I need a motion to amend the agenda. We need to add something to the agenda. Mr. Councillor?[214.36][214.36]- Yes, a resolution to accept an award contract pursuant to the 2016 paving bidding. Can I have a motion please to amend the agenda?[224.36][224.36]- I make a motion to amend the agenda. May I have a second please?[227.36][227.36]- I'll second it. All in favor?[229.66][229.66]- Aye.[230.66][230.66]- Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll get to the citizens' request portion of the meeting if anyone in the audience has anything they'd like to bring before this council. Please go to the microphone, state your name and address. Everybody's happy. Committee reports. Finance committee, any updates? Me and Julie, no. Public Safety and Public Works committee. Eric Felkey?[261.66][262.96]- We need to, Madam Mayor, maybe after being over, sit down and see if you have an outline
for us on the public safety, basically what you want from -- because I knew that's a new committee, right?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.[279.86][280.46]- So we have an outline so we can get together with a meeting and go from there. Okay.[285.86][285.86]- And as far as the -- oh, that's the next committee, I'm sorry. Okay, it's okay. Personnel committee, Julie, Jack, anything?[296.16][296.16]- Tricia, yeah. I'm sorry. Tricia, I'm looking at you. Tricia, Jack. Sorry, Tricia.[303.16][304.26]- I don't believe we have anything to report right now.[306.86][307.86]- It seems like there's some -- sorry, that there's some meetings that are taking place
that maybe that we don't know about, like the Banana Split. We haven't heard anything since that first meeting that I went to.[319.36][319.36]- Oh, it's every Wednesday, last Wednesday of the month.
I think the last one was canceled, wasn't it?[324.36][324.36]- Well, but they ended up moving over where Ice Cream Joe is at. Oh.[328.86][328.86]- So there was not help here.
Okay.[331.36][331.36]- But I could show you the day as far as -- Yeah, you would.[334.06][334.06]- I'll show the council general because it's --
You're on the wrong committee though. That would be the events committee. We're on personnel, but that's okay.
Oh, personnel.[341.16][342.06]- Jerry will explain.
Health insurance committee. Wayne and I met, I think everybody, I think we talked about the fact that our healthcare insurance policy expires June 30th. We met with ASME and the FOP and made a proposal to them, so we're waiting to hear back from them and we'll let you know what happens. Events committee, Jerry?[370.86][371.36]- We were supposed to have a meeting about the Christmas parade and that, but it was
canceled. The Banana Split Festival had a meeting last Wednesday I believe, but I was unable to make it. We usually have one every month, so...
We need to get Alan to make sure that he has Tricia and Jack's email addresses.[397.56][397.56]- I reached out to both Alan and David in February and I haven't heard back from either of them. Wayne will follow up on that? I had lunch with Alan on Friday, totally unrelated, and things are going really well with the Banana Split. It sounds like they're getting a lot of interest and they're really excited about it, so...[419.16][419.86]- Five people signed up for the Banana Split run? Five?[424.26][425.26]- It's early yet. Parking committee, did you guys meet yet?[429.46][429.46]- No. Wayne, I thought you wanted to get that started.
We haven't --
Wayne has the agenda for that.[434.36][434.86]- Wayne advised. Go ahead, Wayne.[436.86][436.86]- Not yet. I just, the help issue and all the other issues have kind of taken, because
of timing, have taken precedence, but I was kind of waiting on the board, the actual authority to determine what they're doing with that property. So it looks like we're going to have to meet anyway.
What property?
They're looking to sell a small parking lot behind the 1100 building.
Oh, okay.
It's only like 10 spots.
Yeah.
But they need to sell it because they have the authority to sell easily.
Okay.
Wayne Abad and I have sat down and talked numerous times over this situation here and this council, we're going to have to sit with private meeting and discuss what we want with the parking authority.
Okay. And the last one is the Great Latrobe School District Student Showcase Committee. I'm guessing you guys haven't met, but I guess our target for that would be in January, or I mean, I'm sorry, September of next year, that we would have a plan together to reach out to the school districts and maybe have one student a quarter kind of get recognized for their accomplishment. You gave me the idea for that, even though you're not a great Latrobe school student, you have a Latrobe connection, so... Board and Authority reports, anything from -- we had a Park and Rec Commission meeting third Thursday of every month. I think they're looking at their options for the deck hockey. So we'll see, we'll see how that unfolds.[538.16][538.16]- What's the bathroom situation down there? Down -- they had a problem, there was a sewage problem. I thought they had it corrected and I thought they had a plan in place for, you know, locking it and unlocking it. Has that not happened yet?
Jim Miller's supposed to be doing it this month.
Yeah, I know. They had a sewage, or a septic, some kind of, they had a problem, but I think they fixed it. Do you know Mike?
No, no, I'm unaware.
Okay. Yes, yeah, yeah. I knew they had a problem, but I thought they fixed it. Thought, or told me they fixed it.[579.86][580.26]- Does it appear? Mm-hmm.[582.26][583.86]- Is it not open? Do you know? How long ago was that, do you know? Because I got a phone call about it too. We can help check, but I -- April 30?
Okay, because Jim said at the last meeting that he's going to firm up. I guess that's what they're going to do.
Kind of get volunteers to lock it. I guess their only problem in opening it is locking it. Department reports. Mike, Public Works?
Nothing to report.
Chief Bumar?
Nothing here, man.
I told you, everybody's a really good man. Chief Brazili?
I guess I'll talk.
Okay.
Nothing bad. On April 23rd, our department held a state certified, we hosted a state certified railway preparedness class. We used the new community college, one of their community rooms with the smart boards and everything. It was very interesting. It was about an ADAR class. We had state instructors. One was a chief from State College PA and one of our local hazmat guys, so we did that and between 30 and 60 trains come through here a day. And I don't know that you really want to know what's all on those, but a lot of ethanol, what they call unit trains, and if there's ever, and I should say it's probably not if, it's when it happens because eventually it will unfortunately, and pretty much our evacuation points are going to be mile to mile and a half, so...
So this was like a hazardous prep course?
Yep. State certified, we all got certificates. Very interesting. We felt the need to do that, take the new college and the amount of rail traffic that comes through here.
I'm surprised there's that much.
We were there, Rosie, at lunchtime. It was 18 by lunchtime. We started at 7:00. There was 18 trains we counted.
Well, thank you John for doing that. That's very important.
And what we're going to do, Madam Mayor, is eventually we're going to have another kind of like prep class and we're going to try to invite council and all the department heads to attend a kind of...
Condensed version?
Yeah, it'll be condensed. But very interesting and basically what you're looking at is a bomb on wheels, so...
Wow.
Very interesting and it was worth having, so...
Thank you, Chief. Code enforcement, Ann, anything going on?
No, I just wanted to remind residents again to refrain from depositing their dress clippings on the streets, alleys, sidewalks, because it will go down to the catch bases in fog. And I see it all over the place. I just blew it right up.
That reminds me. Mike, what's going on with this street sweeper?
We're still waiting for, I guess, the funding or the approval. I'm not sure of the full details of that.
Zach, I see your fingers twitching over there. You want to say something?
Yeah, we received the financing documentation from the financing company after we received approval from the state to go ahead with the transaction and some of the documentation didn't exactly comply with Pennsylvania law. The lenders, Wells Fargo, which I believe is out of Minnesota, don't quote me on that, but some of the portions of the agreement didn't comply with Pennsylvania law, so we made what I thought were very small changes and sent it all in and they've been holding on to it for a week and a half now.
It's been over, yeah, it's been over two weeks, so we hope that, we've received an email a little bit ago saying that they're going to get together with us tomorrow and hopefully we can air it.
I mean, we've got a lot of stuff going on this summer, so we need to get --
We'd really like to use it two weeks.
We need to get that street, the streets cleaned up. Okay. Anything else? Anybody have any other questions on any of those things? Okay, Mr. Councillor, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item is in planning and development. As you called during the agenda session two weeks ago, we discussed a possible amendment to the ordinance book regulating the raising of chickens as well as to add bees into that domesticated animals section of the code. Council seems happy to entertain that. So we prepared a motion. Motion would be to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 58 to address the keeping of domesticated chickens and bees.
May I have a motion please?
I'll make a motion, Madam.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda under Administration and Finance Department is the appointing of the city manager as the city's liaison for securing reimbursement from the state requests incurred during the snowstorm this past winter. The department provided with us kind of a foreign resolution that they want us to use regarding this designation. It's been determined that we would utilize the city manager as the representative, so we would need a motion approving and permitting the execution of this resolution, having the city manager as being the agent.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second please?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-25. Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Ms. Cogwell-Frankner?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those are six yes.
The next item is the resolution authorizing the execution of an approval of the agreement relative to the lighting on the 981 bridge project. I'll just summarize the resolution. The Department of Transportation requires that for the work to be done on the bridge that the city assume the lighting for the bridge, so the resolution would approve the execution of that roadway lighting agreement entered into between the city and Penn Dock.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, I have one. Did they approve our design?
Yeah.
With the --
See, those emails are not the, is the light similar to what they used in 1930?
1930s?
1935, yeah.
1935. I knew, I saw we sent it out. I didn't know if they were okay with it.
Because that was their --
Their design?
Yeah.
Awesome. It's going to look really nice. Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-26. Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Ms. Cogwell-Frankner?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those are six yes.
Do you want more Zach?
Yes, I do. This is the last resolution for today. This is the one added by amendment to the agenda. This is a resolution for the acceptance of bids and awarding contracts to the 2016 municipal paving program. As a summary, bidding was conducted through Gibson Thomas. Bids were selected, publicly opened, and verified for the project. Two, there are three components of the project this year. The first is for the hot mix paving, which was awarded to Dairy Construction for an amount of $46,643.75. Second component was the tar and chip, or also known as chill, chip sealing component, which was awarded to Russell Standard in the amount of $61,718.40. And the third component was a joint venture between Dairy Township and the city of Latrobe, which was appropriately bid by Dairy Township to pave a portion of Wood Street and James Street. Both streets are owned by the city as well as the township on opposite sides of the street and the city's component of that is $23,500. So the appropriate action would be to make a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
Motion to approve the...
Resolution.
Resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a second please?
I'll second it.
Pick one. Pick Tricia. Any questions or discussion? When are we going to do the paving?
You know, as soon as the low bidders are notified, we'll consult with them and, you know, it's, we're going to try to plan on doing it where it doesn't interfere with any of the events that are going on, you know, at the time, but when also it's feasible for them to do it and everything.
What about the chipping? About, are you going to do that at the same time?
You know what, that's going to be separate from the asphalt. That's going to be, you know, anywhere from July to September is the ideal.
Well, we got to get the street sweeper fronted first before we can do that, so...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
On this print tabulation, just these two pages?
Yes, yes. The... Yeah, all, okay.
I don't know if we have the actual... Yeah, but we have four bids, four bid on the paving and two bid on the tar and chip. I'm not sure if you have that.
We don't have all that.
No, you are. For some reason we didn't get a copy of the tar and chip. That's just the bid tabulation for the paving. In other words, what happened was, there is two proponents. We bid A and B for both. And we were going with B because of the cost of dairy.
Okay.
Just stated, but what you're seeing is the bids for the paving.
Not the chicken.
No, tar and chip was just Russell's standard dairy.
Well, stop. If you want a copy of that.
And I guess, we have it downstairs, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Yeah. Yeah, they normally, Gibson Thomas will send that to us. Once they've expanded their number, but there wasn't an extent. It's just a matter of so much or whatever. It's very hard.
Why does one page have Pioneer Street and the other page?
One was going to, the one with Pioneer Street we were going to do if we had enough money.
If we had to catch up on it, do up on Wood Street combined with Dairy Township is what happened.
Right. And then the reason that has been done is piping and a lot of work has been done on the street, so it's something that has to be done. Dairy Township was kind of to, they're going to provide a lot of labor, so our cost is really going to be a lot lower than what we're getting.
And actually that was probably the worst section of Wood Street, our section, if you go and look at it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mike, you'll be conscious of the things going around the town and communicate that with these companies.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-27. Ms. Cogwell-Frankner?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
Those are six yes.
Any unfinished business anybody wants to talk about? How about new business?
On the unfinished business, do we check out down there in the first boardside down Genway Y, garbage trucks are picking up certain on or what?
You know what, I'm still on, carrying a bomb from you and ask that question, and I'm still in the process of getting information, but apparently that's the way the garbage company has it set up where some are in the alley and some are on the streets. I don't know if it's any over, I have a reason to it, but you know, I can pursue that further if I get a chance.
And we have something else on people just leaving their bags, sit down on a front street like that all week long for like the week. Are they allowed to do that or is that?
I mean, do I have to, you're working to see?
Talking bags with stickers on it.
No, I understand that, but a lot of communities have a limit. You can't put your bag on till a certain time. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't really do that. Well, is it for ours? I don't have a bag. I use it.
I mean, most places you can't put it on till like 3 o'clock, 9:00.
Then it is the night before. Ours is the same, yeah.
Ours is?
Yeah.
It's actually you can put it on after 12 noon. What day before?
12 noon the day before?
Yeah. Ask the code enforcement officer, who knows? Any new business? Anyone wants to talk about?
I have new business. I've been working with Danny Schmidt trying to get us at Gibson Thomas. He wants to have a little open house for us so that people kind of see. They want to do a little presentation for council and department heads who want to go, and Wayne and Bar and Zach if you'd like. Trying to figure out a date, maybe before the June council meeting on the Monday, so...
Sounds good.
Any ideas?
It's their 100th anniversary this year, I believe, isn't it?
It's not bad.
I think so. It's the 100th anniversary, yeah, Gibson Thomas, so that's, what did you say?
I was going to say the end is a little...
I think that sounds good, what you do before the meeting. This is the time where we have our last citizens' request for items on the agenda. Anybody have anything on their mind? At this time I'm going to, since no one is here from Joe's family, I'm going to read the proclamation from here. You know, as all of you know, you know, we lost our very good friend and dedicated employee, Joe Bush. So we have a proclamation for Joe that we will get to his family, but I'd like to read it. Whereas the Latrobe city family was greatly saddened by the passing of Joseph A. Bush, director of the city public works department on March 1, 2016, and whereas the city has been benefited immensely by Joe's service in the public works department beginning in 1984 and especially since the early 1990s when he became the director of public works. And whereas, as the director of public works, he steadfastly maintained the city's public road system, sidewalks, and traffic control. Joe, along with his public works employees, spent many a long hour plowing snow to keep our citizens safe during the winter. He was also instrumental in the growth of our municipal transfer station, one of the few of its kind in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, Joe approached everything he did with a smile on his face, a can-do attitude, and unbridled energy. He enjoyed hunting, fishing, spending time with his family, and coaching for the Latrobe Dairy Area Teenage League. He also took great pride in his classic cars. And whereas, Joe was also an active and valued community member, serving as an usher of the Holy Family Church, as well as other activities in the community, including the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Department, Company Number 3 and 4, the Frontier Club, the FO Eagles, and the VFW Post Number 3414. Now therefore, the mayor, on behalf of the city council of the city of Latrobe and its citizens, hereby express to the family of Joe Bush its heartfelt gratitude and thanks for sharing with us this wonderful public servant who was always friendly and enthusiastic with everyone he met. He will be remembered as a person of honorable and upright character. Quote, "But if a man happens to find himself, he has a mansion which he can inhabit with dignity all the days of his life." James A. McNair, author. The dignity and respect which Joe showed to others throughout his lifetime were the cornerstones of the mansion which he inhabited with great dignity. Joe is a dedicated public servant who will be fondly remembered and sorely missed by the citizens of our community and by his friends at the city. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this ninth day of May 2016. We miss Joe. We miss his laugh and we will be doing a dedication sometime later this summer. We're going to do a street sign at the entrance to the transfer station and we're going to designate that Joe Bush Way, I think is what we decided, correct? So we'll let, we'll let everybody know when we're going to do that. We'll gather there and pay tribute to our friend Joe. Okay, that's a tough one. Couple things. Relay the Life is June 4. I got a call from Teresa, can't remember her last name, Kynna Cutt? Yeah, and she has asked that the city, any members of council, city employees, whatever, do the, do the starting lap. It's at 10 o'clock on June 4 down to the stadium, so I would ask and encourage as many of you that can attend as possible to support that event. Don't, let's see, I don't think, we have a council meeting before June 11? No. Well anyways, June 11 is the Mr. Rogers Day. We'll be dedicating the statue of Mr. Rogers in Memorial Park and there'll be Daniel Tiger. And there'll be Daniel Tiger will be here and the Cabaret Theater will be doing a puppet show and there'll be all kinds of activities for the kids. It'll be a family day and I encourage everyone to, to join in and participate in that. What did I forget, anything? June 11th. So at this time, I would like to introduce this year's International Junior Miss, Victoria Pickett. Her mom and I went to high school together. Her mom is the Latrillian, graduated with me, I won't tell you what year. But Chris, Chris was formerly Chris Rubino and many of you may remember her dad, Bob Rubino, who was president for many years of Teleline Vasco over on 981. We had talked here in council about, we're going to, we're going to start a program here, we're hoping to start a program here where we recognize the young people. There's so much, there's so much in the media today about all the bad stuff, you know, the drug problem and different things that are going on, but there are so many young people in our communities that are doing wonderful things and we need to celebrate and recognize those people. And so I thought this would be a good kickoff to have someone with Latrobe connections. I'd like to introduce Chris's parents, Victoria's parents, Chris and Jeff Pickett. And Victoria, if you wouldn't mind going back to the micro stand so our gentleman over here can videotape you and tell us a little bit about your journey.
Hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Pickett. I'm a current 2015 International Junior Miss teen, an opera singer, a professional model, and I have hypermobility Ehlers-Danlos syndrome and a form of dysautonomia called postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. Despite the fact that my health issues would be debilitating to most, I have risen above to excel and have had the opportunity to touch the lives of many around the world. My two health conditions, EDS and POTS, greatly affect my quality of life and ability to perform daily tasks. EDS is a connective tissue disorder that causes my joints, ligaments, skin and blood vessels to be much looser than they should be. Because of this, the blood pools to my feet when I sit or stand for long periods of time, which causes me to have POTS. The symptoms of POTS are varied but include irregular organ function, dizziness, increase or slowed heart rate, low blood pressure, excessive fatigue, exercise intolerance, nausea, weakness, sensitivity to noise and light, dehydration and insomnia. It's estimated that one in every 100 teenagers has this disorder. Having these conditions would deter most people, most people from pursuing big goals outside of their comfort and ability zone. But I decided that I could feel sick lying on my couch or I could go out and try to do the things that I love. I chose living even though I knew it would be challenging. I continued to play piano and sing. I also began to model professionally and became the youth ambassador for the Dysautonomia Youth Network of America. I started to participate in pageants at 16 years old as a way of getting more stage experience for singing opera. But life is funny sometimes. At my first pageant, I competed against 115 girls and ended up placing first runner-up to the Miss Pennsylvania Junior Team title. This ignited my passion for pageantry outside of my original goal of gaining stage experience. I continued to compete for the next several years. In 2015, I was asked to accept the 2015 International Junior Miss Pennsylvania Team title. International Junior Miss, held in July, is a pageant system where title holders from all 50 states and other countries from around the world compete for the international title. At this pageant, I displayed my skills in singing opera and subsequently won the International Team Talent Competition. I then went on to win the overall 2015 International Team title. The resulting year has been a whirlwind. Through this title, I've had the opportunity to travel to New York Fashion Week, London, Paris and the Bahamas. I've also traveled to state pageants across the country, giving me the chance to meet with and positively influence competitors of all ages and backgrounds. While traveling is great, volunteering is also close to my heart. I've had the chance to volunteer with the Ronald McDonald House, Queer Fox Foundation, Salvation Army, Go Red for Women, and I've sang the National Anthem for multiple events. One of my most important volunteer positions has been with Dyna, the Dysautonomia Youth Network of America. The organization seeks to facilitate change, to improve the lives of dysautonomia patients and their families, to foster awareness, support and a better understanding of dysautonomia conditions in the community at large, to encourage compassionate care, efficient diagnosis, reliable treatment and research of dysautonomia conditions. During the past seven years, I've been able to be a youth ambassador for Dyna and have been a part of numerous newspaper articles helping to educate the public about this condition. I have also created a fundraiser for Dyna as well as being an active member of their support blog. Given my incredible opportunities and travels lately, it is an honor to be recognized by the Latrobe City Council and to maintain my roots here. I was born in Latrobe Hospital. While I've grown up in North Huntington and am a student at the University of Pittsburgh, Latrobe feels like a second home to me. My grandfather and my grandmother, Robert and Josephie Rubino, were active members of Latrobe and their presence enriched both the community and my life. I'm proud to call Latrobe my second home and to receive this recognition from the Latrobe City Council. I plan on continuing my education at the University of Pittsburgh for a degree in business administration. I then hope to earn a master's degree in vocal performance so that one day I can open a music conservatory for kids. I would like for them to be able to have a musical education and the opportunities that I have that helped shape me into who I am today. I would like to remain a youth ambassador for Dyna, keep my hand in pageantry and continue to model. I mostly hope that my story will help to spread awareness and understanding of illness that has affected so many. And I hope that I might be an inspiration to others struggling with these and other chronic illnesses. Thank you.
You certainly are an inspiration, young lady. I'll tell you what, Jeff and Chris, I'm sure you're very, very proud. Thank you so much for sharing your story with us. It's pretty remarkable and I'm sure, I'm just sorry that I didn't have you bring a tape so I could hear you sing on. But I'm sure we'll be seeing more from you in the many upcoming years because I'm sure there'll be great things coming, so thank you very much. Wayne, I think I skipped over you. City manager report.
That's all right. Just a quick, we're going to have on Thursday, just FYI, if you see about 25 people walking through the city, it's the people from the Land Bank throughout Pennsylvania, they're coming to Latrobe, having a two-day seminar and then on Thursday, we're taking them on a little tour around the city.
What's that?
That's Thursday, they're going to tour about 2:00.
This coming Thursday?
Mm-hmm. About 2:00. We're just, we're walking down the Berry Street and walking up the trail and stuff, about an hour, 20 minute walk.
Okay. We're going to go into an executive session and then we're just going to adjourn after that, so there won't be anything. I mean, you're welcome to stick around, but I don't know why you want to. Okay, so we'll turn to executive session.